I'll second the motion by Radek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes four zero. Items two through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the August thirteenth meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from board administration is approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcel, also known as five twelve to fourteen Market Street for Tuesday, September third at four thirty-five P. M. Item six from the deputy commissioner of elections is to receive the appointments of Connie Westfall and Ruth Groth as council members for the city of Anthem. Six from the deputy county auditor is to receive amended auditor's quarterly report to replace the approved report on July third. Seven from human resources includes A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions, and B, authorization to initiate the hiring process. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Radek.
Ruth Growth.
Ruth Growth, thank you.
Yep. She would be a gas. I think she's one of our viewers, so I better correct that, otherwise I'll hear about it the next time I see her, so.
Thousand pardons.
I mean, the last thing you want to do is alienate one of our millions of listeners, so.
That's absolutely right, Keith. That's absolutely right.
Be a growth error. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes four zero. We did have a motion to second on that, correct?
Yeah.
Item eight from human resources, Melissa Thomas, for action is approval to create a human resources temporary secretary position.
Hi, Melissa Thomas, human resources director, and we've had a resignation in our office, which takes us down to two FTEs where we usually have four, and that's what's budgeted. So instead of trying to train two employees at once, I decided to hopefully get a temp in here to get us through that time period so we can get both trained and hopefully a full office soon.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Radek. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes four zero.
Thank you.
Item nine for secondary roads, county engineer Mark Nera, for action is approval of the secondary roads driveway and entrance policy, PPM number one.
I've just been going through and reviewing secondary road policies. The number one is the driveway policy. There's really no changes that we're proposing beyond adding the language to allow the second driveway on dead end roads that are in a curb and gutter situation. Those folks have limited ways to get something, especially a long load if they have a camper or some kind of a trailer, swung into their property. So sometimes that second driveway is essential for them. The risk is very low as far as, you know, typically we have concerns when we have a lot of accesses coming out of the driveway. Everyone is a possible point of a collision if people aren't paying attention. And when you have limited frontages, two driveways within two hundred feet is somewhat difficult to get in, particularly if you have a ditch, you're dealing with sixty, seventy feet of culvert on a driveway. That's hard to fit in more than one in two hundred feet. But in this case, where we're dealing with low speed, limited traffic, as the individual requested back in twenty twenty-three, I didn't see an issue with this addition. Other than that, I just wanted to give the board a chance to be refamiliarized with the policy, see if you had any concerns. Basically, we're designing for safe access to properties at the speed limit, five hundred and fifty feet being the minimum site distance for our typical house or field entrance, so that the folks that are trying to get out on the road have adequate opportunity to see traffic approaching, and that approaching traffic has time to get off the gas, hit the brakes, and stop before a vehicle pops out on the road in front of them. So it's basically a continuation of the policy we've been following for longer than the sixteen years I've been here. There were a couple of massages I added to it when the board and I discussed this. I want to say the last time we looked at it was twenty-eleven. So this is, there have been no changes in the road geometrics that would require us to look at any of those site distances or anything, and I recommend approval.
A moment. Second.
Motion by Nelson, second by Benjer. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes four zero. Now recess the board of supervisors meeting and convene the Bennett, McDonald, Levy, and Wolf Creek Drainage District's trustees meeting for item ten for information submitted by ISG, Caleb Rasmussen, and also rejoining us, county engineer Mark Nera. This is discussion of flood damage repair in response to the Corps of Engineers.
I'm Caleb. I'm Caleb Rasmussen, engineer with ISG, working with Mark on the flood damages on the Bennett Smithland levees. In addition to that, I'm also the levy engineer for the continuation of levy system down into Monona County, working with that drainage district as well. What's in front of you is put together as we got information late last week from Army Corps of Engineers, kind of an assessment of what is out there for damages. Generally, upstream damages are significantly worse, and then they mitigate themselves as they move downstream, just with the nature of the flood event that came through. In addition to that, there's some timeline items there of when we received information and guidance from FEMA and Army Corps of Engineers when we've submitted information. One of the things, or the current item for damage assessment with the Corps is a Water Resources Development Act of twenty twenty, section one twenty-two. This is the emergency response authority that the Army Corps of Engineers operates under following flood event. This is for inactive levy sponsors, meaning that the drainage district has had maintenance out there that has not been addressed to satisfy, I guess, the legislative code that authorizes the levy system, PL eighty-four ninety-nine. After the submittal of the initial damage assessment to the Corps for the section one twenty application, they followed up and said that they had forgotten to include information in that initial response. In order for the drainage district to apply for damages, there has to be a letter of intent that states that the drainage district is willing and capable of paying for all engineering, permitting, and construction costs pre-flood in order for the Army Corps to offer assistance for the post-flood damages. So essentially, the district has to pay for everything, pre-flood, bring it up to snuff, and then the Army Corps will come in on the backside and pick up the cost. Provided the extent of the damages that are out there and the continuation of the existing damages that were there, I do not believe it's in the financial interest of the district to pursue this. There have been, we've had several ongoing conversations, and I've had several questions with the Army Corps of Engineers, which is in the second page. Essentially, this act is new enough, being in twenty twenty, that they have not had the opportunity to see it through its full process. So a lot of the questions they could not answer, such as what is the integrity or the legality of that letter of intent stating that the district is willing and capable of funding those costs? And they also have not had any of these in construction yet. So following the flooding of twenty nineteen in southwest Iowa, they had three applicants after this was adopted, and those are in the planning, engineering, and another cooperative agreement. So essentially, someone was in the process of paying the district, or by the district, I mean the Army Corps of Engineers, for the permitting, engineering, and construction. So it's been four years following their application for the twenty nineteen, and no construction work has been done. With that, now comes the question of how is the drainage district and the levees to proceed without, in my opinion, not having any financial assistance from the Army Corps of Engineers for the repairs? And this is something that's been an ongoing communication. I've been in communication with the Iowa Homeland Security Emergency Management Office of Levy Safety. There is some money available there, but for the most part, it appears that the drainage district is going to be on its own for the cost to do the repairs out here. I guess before jumping into any other discussions, are there any questions from the board this time? Kind of brief and quick.
Just as a little bit of history, our levy, the Bennett, McDonald, Smithland, has been out of compliance since the nineteen ninety and nineteen ninety-three floods. At that point in time was when some of the initial damages occurred out there. Some of that work has been done. The banks southeast of the Highway one forty-one bridge have been repaired. We did that work in twenty-eleven. That area was ripraped in twenty fourteen. The Corps at that time said, well, that's still not good enough. You need to do some areas upstream of that bridge, and then there's an area around Parnell Creek near, I think it's Three Hundredth Street, where the bridge, where we have a small bridge that crosses at the beginning of that Parnell Creek branch that also is in noncompliance. The estimate to get that work done, in other words, for us to bring it into compliance where the Corps would begin to move in and start to repair the damage that occurred in this flood, you're on the hook for probably a million and a half to two million dollars before they even come in and start to look at what was damaged in this June event. It's, the Corps of Engineers ruled, and this is in the stack of correspondence we have in our office, that the benefit cost ratio to making some of those repairs at their expense was point one-six to one. You know, you need to be one to one to justify a repair, and we're a long way away from that. What's always struck us as difficult in what we protested in the past was, how can you expect the county board of supervisors to come up with that kind of money for a point one-six to one benefit cost if you guys won't do it? But, you know, again, we've been, we've been hit once again, and now there's some issues with where do we want to go from here?
Why isn't the Corps responsible for the nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-three damage that was never fixed?
Because the board signed an agreement back in nineteen sixty-three when this project was built, and it said that Woodbury County would be responsible for the maintenance of this system once it was constructed. The definition of maintenance is what has always been argued about. Is maintenance keeping the trees off of it, keeping it mowed, keeping the animals from burrowing in it, making sure the culverts still work that are taking water underneath the levy? Those, to me, are maintenance issues. The Corps argued, and I'd say it was a convenient argument on their point back in the nineteen nineties, when the initial damage occurred and the benches were lost, other damage occurred along the run of the, or the reach of this flood control project, they said, well, maintenance is fixing it post-flood. Initially, there was a FEMA amount given after that ninety-three flood, but then they took it back and said, well, this is a Corps of Engineers project, the Corps should be paying for it. So paperwork, there's a whole series of letters where paperwork chased each other, trying to get something done. Essentially, nothing's really been done, and it's been a cost prohibitive project for the board.
So I would agree with you that I think it's been convenient how they've manipulated maintenance. I think that what the county has been doing out there is the maintenance, keeping the trees off, riprap, that kind of stuff. I think these fixes after these big events are on them, but they don't want to do that, whatever. So hypothetically speaking, if we put no money into this levy, if the Corps is going to do nothing, then what?
Well, it would continue to degrade, and at some point, there would be breaches along, along the system. As of right now, directly north of one forty-one on the east levy bank, there's a transmission that, that crosses the Little Sioux, and that levy embankment has erosion pretty much up into the top of the embankment. So I imagine the next two, three years, it would be increasingly difficult to get a car on top of that levy, and then there's some, that infrastructure, the transmission line that runs across it would be at risk too. So I think there is a need to protect some of that infrastructure upfront and not in the timeline of the Corps through the section one twenty. Unfortunately, I think that would be at the, at the expense of the drainage district. That being said, there is an application process that Iowa Homeland Security is supposed to be sending me for their levy rehab fund that might offer some financial costs share there, so.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the sheet that looks like a plan sheet that's in your packet there, that helps get to what, what we're talking about as far as those repaired areas. You can see in front of the levy itself, down here in the bottom, it says bench. That's an area of, I would almost call it low bank for the river. It's protection of the levy prism itself. So if you, if you, if you imagine that levy embankment, that three to one slope there going down to stream bed, there's some almost sacrificial material in that bench that's, that's protecting the levy itself. It's usually along that low bank where we would place riprap. This is what we rebuilt southeast of the one forty-one bridge, and then the property owner, over three years, paid the county back for placement of riprap in that reach. The Corps had ripraped up to the county line, which is the Nagel Drainage District south of us. But again, because of that point one-six to one benefit cost ratio, they didn't deem the Woodbury County portion of that being of value to update. So the property owner did and was willing to pay that cost, and that part held up pretty good. We've got some minor damage on it. I'm not sure we've seen all of the culvert outlets yet. Have we to see if the gates are intact on the culvert?
Are you talking about Mr. McCall doing the work? Is that who you're referencing?
What's that?
Mr. McCall, is that who you're referencing?
Yes, Mr. McCall is the individual who's paid the lion's share of the work out there, but he owns over four hundred acres that's protected within that area, that southeast bank. It's farm ground, that's why it's such a low benefit cost ratio. Once you get south of the Poverty Hollow Drainage District, and if you look at the other map, you can see where Poverty Hollow is. There's two plan sets there, one with the highlight, and then the one that's in color shows the protected areas, but Poverty Hollow is where it, it ties in back to the high bank. This, that's what separates us from the Nagel, the Nagel being a separate system that ties in. That protects the town of Rodney. So their benefit cost ratio is quite a bit higher because we're protecting farms and houses and a city compared to ours where we're protecting farm ground.
And I will note that on the, on the east side at Poverty Hollow, that is the sole responsibility. So for a section one twenty request to go through only Woodbury County or the drainage district, we'd have to submit this letter of intent. On the east side, it's a little bit different because the way the Army Corps views that levy is as a system, so it's a continuous embankment. So if you were to get a car on it and you were to drive whenever you'd get off the levy, that's the entire system. So that stretches from Woodbury County down into Monona County, hits the diversion well down into Monona County, and then goes back up into Wolf Creek clear over. It's several miles of levy system.
That's this other sheet that you see.
All three, so there's three levy sponsors on there. There's a Woodbury County or Drainage District, there's a Nagel Drainage District in Monona County, and then there's the Inter County Drainage District as well. All three of those sponsors have to submit letters of intent to the Corps for them to begin their review for section one twenty. And I've had discussions with the Inter County Drainage District, and they do not plan on submitting a section one twenty letter of intent there. So for that less levy bank, it would appear that there's no, there's no real option unless Inter County could be convinced to submit a letter of intent. But again, I don't know if it would be in the district's financial interest to go after that, considering the requirements to enter that program.
Well, the drainage district isn't going to have the money for this.
It would be levied against the benefited properties. You know, this is one of the issues that's bothered Mr. McCall is, you know, he feels like he's always paying the bill, though he is the benefited landowner. You know, we just don't have a lot of property tax base that's supporting what in nineteen sixty-three was a pretty cheap project. Today, it's, it's quite expensive to take care of these. Even going through and cleaning out the pipes a couple of years ago and videoing them to be sure that they were intact, that came into something of a thirty-one or thirty-two thousand dollar project, and this is just to blow the dirt out of the pipes and video them to be sure that they were still intact, and, and that caused a bit of a heartache for Dennis McCall at the time. He ended up with over twenty thousand dollars of that bill. Again, he owns the lion's share of the land. It's a lot of burden to put on people. It's one of the reasons we haven't done a lot of looking at rebuilding that overbank area. The bench, as it's called, upstream one forty-one.
So if we do nothing, and it continues to heat away at the levy, and then eventually the levy falls in and is no more, then what?
Then that, that land floods. One thing that I had talked about with the Corps of Engineers at the last inspection visit that we had, and we just hadn't had time to go to work on this, but a portion of this levy, the Parnell Creek portion and the portion upstream of old one, of one forty-one, could be removed from the system. It takes an application by the county and then an approval of that application by Congress to take a flood protection area out of that system. I don't know how much you've done with any of those, Caleb. It was a new program to me.
That's been a legitimate conversation in the last month.
Yeah, and this is something that I think it's worth having ISG pursue with Corps on our, on the county's behalf to take that out, but I think we also should take steps to protect that transmission line at this point in time. Perhaps we could get some financial cost assistance from the utility that's being protected by it in at least addressing that portion. If you think of the levy itself being a prism, forget that that bank is, the bench is all gone in this area. We've actually washed back into the, the three to one prism of the levy, and getting that area fixed while the rest of this is going on is something that we should probably pursue sooner rather than later. I, I don't know, Caleb, we didn't have a chance to really put this together. He just got some, some of this information today, so we're receiving comment from Corps of Engineers even as we're working on this and trying to get it into something we can present to the board. If any of you wanted to go down there and do, take a look at it with us at some point in time next week after we get back from ISAC, that would be something where you could get some boots on the ground, eyes on the embankment, and see exactly what we're talking about.
I have had conversations, like I said, with Inter County and then also with the Nagel Drainage District. There is potential for an all sponsor meeting with Army Corps of Engineers and Iowa Hazard, Homeland Security Emergency Management, September fifth. That's only been in the last hour that I've got that information, so.
That was one of the things we wanted to try and get the board involved with too, so. September fifth.
September fifth. So I had not confirmed that with the Corps yet, though.
If any of you were available, that appears a portion of the trustees, I think that would be of value to have you there.
Well, September, September fifth? Where's that at?
Do you have a time?
It would be sometime in the morning, I'm going to say between eight and nine is when the meeting would start.
Okay.
And the Inter County Drainage District meets at seven A. M. at the Monona County office. So that's something that, you know, right now, I would see at the Monona County office just for that.
At the courthouse in Monona?
Correct.
Courthouse, okay.
But, you know, it, it might be something if the Corps is willing to come up, you know, is there a room at Smithland or, you know, a community center at Smithland that they could convene at instead?
Or Hornick might be a possibility too, because that would be on the Woodbury, Monona branch of this, because Woodbury and Monona and Wolf Creek are part of that multiple district system that he was talking about in that one twenty program, correct?
Yes.
So that letter that was signed, Mark, back in nineteen sixty-three, was that just in, in perpetuity? It just, it just goes on and on? Is it just, is there a time limit?
There is no sunset, no time limit, no, the Corps looks at these as being permanent, and, you know, they built that at the request of the Board of Supervisors, who are trustees for the district. The Board of Supervisors signed a resolution that says we will maintain this into perpetuity.
Okay.
If you ever get the urge, I happily open files for you.
Yeah.
So the, the submittal date for the section one twenty is September sixteenth, and that was the intent to get, you know, a sponsor meeting with the Army Corps prior to that date. So right now, this is just an informational meeting outside of maybe, you know, a direction to communicate with the utility company for the immediate repair of that levy embankment, you know, where their transmission line is.
You really would have to have a decision for the September tenth meeting so that we make that September sixteenth guideline. I mean, this, we're not pushing these dates, these are the dates were given by Corps of Engineers, and we're just, like I said, we were getting, Caleb's been collecting information all afternoon, and this has been evolving as we've had phone conversations and emails traded this afternoon. The September fifth meeting, that was the first I had heard of it, because, again, I was trying to get a hold of, ahead of your September tenth meeting, because I viewed that as the last opportunity to, for you guys to be able to make a decision as to whether you wanted to participate, should the other two districts decide to go along with that as well.
Is that a yearly, a yearly application, or is this a?
I, I think this is a post-flood.
This is post-flood.
And so you get one shot at it?
One shot. The actual, the formal submission date was August fourteenth, but the Corps had omitted, you know, that letter out of that, so they did a thirty-day extension on it.
Caleb submitted damages on our behalf. And they had gone out, this is where those watchman services came in to our rescue a little bit with this, is that I was able to call Matthew and activate watchman services, which we have a contract in place with ISG as our drainage engineer, to where when we have damage within a district, you know, we've got our hands full with taking care of the road system. We can bring them in under a contract that's already in place to go out and do inspections on the levy, determine what type of damages might be there, get them. determine what type of damages might be there, get them measured and then submit for either FEMA, Corps of Engineers or whomever might be able to assist the district with damages. So they've done all that. Again, we made that August fourteenth deadline. At the time, they, they were just looking for an estimate, but as he said, they missed some of the information that they need to begin to process the, the repairs that would need to be done. And now they've set that subsequent date about one month later to get that information submitted. It doesn't give you a lot of time to work, especially when we're dealing with an inter-county situation where we have Monona County property and different circumstances down there involved in the process.
So it's, so your, in your estimation, it's a million and a half to two million dollar repair, repair cost?
That, that was numbers I put together a few years ago based on some rough measurements and...
So...
You know, I guess I never pursued it with you guys because we were, it wasn't that we were hoping it would get away, but we were also getting information that we may be able to take that portion of the system out of the program. We used to have a drainage district down on the Maple River. At some point in time in the past, and I haven't looked at the information on it, that one was dissolved. So it is possible. And I think taking that one portion out upstream on that left bank while still keeping the, the levy system active that's protecting the town of Smithland is, is something that would be worth considering because that's where the bulk of the expense is. The southeast quadrant or the, if you face down river, the left bank is the one on your left hand. The, the left bank is in pretty good shape. The right bank was in good shape. It probably needs some repair now after this latest flood debris cleanup at the very least. It's really upstream, that Parnell Creek tie-in and where the bank is pretty heavily incised, where the levy embankment itself is incised by this most recent flood. Those are going to be the really costly repairs. And then upstream of where that damage to the levy prism itself is, is the area where we needed to do quite a bit of work to restore a bench. And that's where the bulk of that, one point five to one point eight would be.
So even if we had that today, we could pay that, is it a guarantee that Army Corps would, would pick up the, the backend costs? Or is it a, is that a gamble or is that in the contract?
If the damage was identified pre-flood, even if the flooding made it worse, that damage was there, Army Corps is not going to provide taxpayer to it. That is a hundred percent district expense and it's worsened state.
But once it is repaired, we would then again request like we did when we fixed the south bank. We would request that they bring it back into the adequate judgment to where future floods would then perhaps be repaired by the Corps, assuming they had funding available to do that when subsequent damage occurred. Basically, they're saying you got to bring it back to post-construction condition.
They, they have not committed to what level of restoration. So within that bench, you know, if it was established thirty feet wide, they haven't said, well, you have to put it back to thirty feet or fifteen feet might be acceptable. They haven't said that, so.
Sometimes I felt dealing with the Corps on this project, it's like losing football. We thought we were there when we did all the work restoring the bench and southeast portion. That was where it was really bad before. It's been some of the floods since then that's done a lot of the damage up north. And the first thing they did after we had, well, yeah, this is nice, but look up there. And this is, I mean, we would really have to go through and get them to check off everything before we did the work so that we were sure we didn't miss anything that allows them not to bring it into full compliance on the system. You're, you're probably in getting close to that two million dollars to get that done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we just had this as information, so. Will, we have a board member volunteer for that September fifth, a couple of board members volunteer for that September fifth meeting. We'll get you the details as it comes out, but.
Yeah.
I think it would be worth having actual trustees sitting in the room, not just the engineers.
I should be able to make that. I think I can make that, so.
Okay, in the next couple of days, we'll get you some confirmation and where it's all at is, is Caleb gets it. I do appreciate the work ISG's done on our behalf. It's, it, it's really been helpful, you know, in the, I want to say it was the two thousand fourteen flood, before we signed the contract for watchman services, we missed damage on the upper Wolf Creek and damage that would have been compensable under FEMA. So this is one of the advantages to putting that together. And it was really one of their engineers that suggested it to us at that point in time. And the Board followed that advice. And I think this is one of the times where it's really paid off. It's given us access to some very good advice with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Now adjourn the Bennett McDonald Levy and Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting and continue the Board of Supervisors Meeting. With item eleven from the Board of Supervisors, that's myself. Item A for action is approval to reallocate one hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars of unspent American Rescue Plan Act funds to expense category three point four in accordance with plan rules. According to those plan rules, all funds must be obligated by December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four and they must be spent in obligated projects by the end of two thousand twenty-six. So we have to make sure that we follow this step and where funds are locked in, so to speak, at the end of this calendar year, that they will be eventually spent in those categories or we will lose those monies. Due to some projects being either completed or for other reasons unobligated, we do have this amount of funding to reallocate, which I would like to cover in one motion tonight. The motion would simply be to reallocate it to the expense category three point four, which is public sector capacity effective service delivery. And in particular, the project number ARPA thirteen, which is covered by a few different expenses, all detail here shortly. The reasons, there are several attachments. I want to go through those. First attachment is the available ARPA funds. And Shane Aubrick with Baker Group is here if we have any questions on this as well as other county employees that have worked on this. Appreciate all their input, building services and... And so what we're looking at here on the available ARPA funds page is different categories and projects that have funds available in the highlighted column. We may, you may be wondering, why are these funds available? And there's some pretty easy answers to those. If we look at administrative expenses, that's covering the consultant, UHY that the Board hired to make sure we were compliant with our reporting completed by Baker Group and the county's finance office. And fortunately, due to the performance of Baker Group and their help in the process and their assistance and their oversight, we haven't had to use UHY as much as we anticipated. However, we do want to hold back some funds in that bucket in case we do have an appeal. As I say, we'll want to reevaluate that towards the end of this calendar year to see if we think we're still going to use those funds that are left over. But at this point, I'd recommend that we have forty thousand available from that, and that's good news. For all of the consternation about the county's use of ARPA funds in the news, we've hired a capable manager for those expense reports. We've hired a capable consultant. We've underspent the funds that we've dedicated to making sure that we are compliant. And that's good news for about two people to hear. Next is the county attorneys, four percent FY twenty-three and twenty-four. Over fifty-three thousand is available from this category simply due to persistent staff vacancies in the county attorney's office. So what we've done in that respect has not been given to all the employees we've budgeted for because not all budgeted positions are filled as we all know. And then the last item, or the last major item is from Troscoyote Emergency Repairs. Sixty thousand dollars is available from this category due to further eligible expenses being unidentified. Kenny, would you like to explain, sorry to put you on the spot, but why that number is sixty thousand? I can't adequately explain why we have that money available.
Building Services performed a good portion of that work in-house. And so it saved quite a few dollars doing so. Part of that work was getting some I-beams up to the, up to the second and third floors of that building, which generally would have caused us to bring on another contractor to do that or be charged by one of the contractors for those services. So we did a lot of that. We did a lot of work in-house on removing and reinstalling some of the fireproofing on that project ourself. And so there was, there was quite a savings attributed to those.
Okay, thank you. After this attachment, want to move on to discussing the next one, which is a memo from the Iowa Judicial Branch to Iowa State Association of Counties along with a invoice, for lack of a better word, to the county. We, you can read this, hopefully you already have, but it states that apparently there's a new state law saying that if counties decide to renovate and improve the space used by the state judicial branch, counties also have to pay twenty-five percent of new furnishings, supplies and equipment expenditures chosen by the state judicial branch after they get the new space. You may be asking why twenty-five percent after extensive research? It's because it says twenty-five percent that we have to pay. So twenty-five percent is the number that is put forward, which is seventy-five thousand, ninety-six dollars and sixty-six cents payable to the Iowa Judicial Branch as penalty for giving them nicer space. I think this is, even though it's kind of a surprise and probably also our fault, it is nice that it is a use of ARPA funds we can simply knock out with this reallocation rather than explain to taxpayers why we need to do something else to cover our bill to the Iowa Judicial Branch. The third attachment is, is that payment requests. And so with that, as I said, the motion would simply reallocate these funds to ARPA expense category three point four and a particular project called Furniture Fixtures and Equipment for the new LEC facility as needed by Woodbury County. In this, when we do this, we, you know, that is the action the Board is taking. And then from that, Baker Group would complete those reports as they have quarterly. And of, of the actual expenses that I'm proposing to cover, two of those are current expense categories and one of them is a future expense that I'll invite Shane and Kenny up later to answer any questions on. Of the current expenses, I already mentioned seventy-five thousand approximately to the Iowa Judicial Branch to pay for twenty-five percent of the new furnishings they require after we gave them new space. And forty thousand dollars to moving or purchase expenses of cooler and freezer to Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center. This is a, for those of us that have visited the Law Enforcement Center building, it is a massive area. There's some sunken area in the floor to hold this massive cooler for all of the food, for the kitchen, for not only inmates, but all the offices housed in the Law Enforcement Center. And so whether or not that's the exact number of the cost to move what we have or go towards a purchase, if that's more cost-effective to the new LEC, that's something that is also a current expense and a current need that is eligible for this ARPA expense category. Is that correct, Kenny? Thank you. Any questions on the current expenses? Okay, now as I said, it's, it's smooth to do one reallocation to a particular category so that it's clear and identify and make sure that, again, these funds are spent by the end of two thousand twenty-six. The remainder of the one hundred seventy-three thousand approximately is fifty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-nine cents to the Building Services Department for Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Expenses for Congregate Settings, which is allowed under ARPA for the Law Enforcement Center. And I would say it's completely reasonable for that amount of money to be expended in these categories between now and the end of two thousand twenty-six. With that, would one or either, one or both of you come up and, you know, detail why we can anticipate this amount of money being spent? What sort of furnitures, fixtures and equipment is the county counted before? And see if we have any questions on that.
So I'll just start off with a few things and Shane can add to it. We're doing some, we will need to be doing some things to improve our intake and booking that are on and above what the design for the facility was. So we installed some countertops in booking and intake and the Sheriff's Office brought up some concerns about safety. They were six-inch countertops, which brings a person that you're bringing in to corrections up close. And the Sheriff's Office felt that they needed a bigger gap between their officers and the people being brought in for booking. So that's just one of the things we're looking at doing is replacing some countertops for solid surface. So that's just a number that's something like thirty-six hundred dollars. But there are, you know, quite, quite a few items similar to that that we need to do to make the facility work a little bit better for them. Another one would be in the master control area. They'd like some cabinetry moved so they can either get more legroom or get more officers into the area at the same time. Things, things like that are, again, improvements to what the original design was that they really didn't, didn't, I guess, understand that they may need at the time we were in design. So Shane, if you'd like to add some other items?
Yeah, I can give you one. At the authority meeting a while ago, we had a thirty thousand dollar cost that was offered to re, to add just some ventilation to zero zero four six, which is an IT closet down in the county attorney's space. We said it's needed, but the costs were just too high and we didn't want any more delays on the jail. So we said that would be something that we would put forth to Building Services to be able to fix because they're talking about just cutting in a vent and a louver for thirty thousand dollars. That was something. Again, some of those projects, there's, there's multiple ones of those. Costs were too high for some different lock handles to be changed out. We just put that to Building Services and said this would be money that Kenny would have to come up with in a budget. So there's, there's multiple ones of that, that if anybody was at the authority meeting when some of those things got brought up, we mentioned that and said, this is something we're just going to table and let Kenny do that rather than pay the contractor and have another possible delay come up for these things.
Delay and markup.
So that seems like, you said thirty thousand dollars? For?
Ventilation to, to go to zero zero four six. Right now, all the rest of the IT closets minus that one have a mini-split system that sits there to provide supplemental cooling tube. This has nothing, so as you leave the door shut, this room is going to get extremely warm. So we talked about cutting a vent in and bring, bring the return air in from up above and then like a louver in the door or another vent on the other side with a fan. Something that's not going to cost thirty thousand dollars.
Okay. What about examples of replacement items over the next two years?
Well, I mean, if he needs, I'll let you speak. I was going to speak.
If we need something on a normal replacement item, that will probably be done under our budget, normal annual budget, unless it for some reason is a high-cost item.
Yeah, but I can show you, if you decide you need a scissor lift or you decide you need another scrubber or something like that, that's the equipment that could be purchased. need another scrubber or something like that, that's the equipment that could be purchased. I think that might have been what you were asking.
So equipment.
If we decide we need a scissor lift for something, we'll get out there. Or maybe because, I think surprisingly enough to me, and maybe to you, the metal mix that's out there is only supposed to be mowed twice a year. So the stuff, when you get past the turf mix, it's only supposed to be mowed twice a year. Currently, it's going to need like a sickle-type mower or a big brush hog to knock that down. You're going to have to hire somebody to do it, so that's another thing. If you decide it makes more sense for you to do it, you may need another piece of equipment to mow some of that taller grass.
Well, it's cheaper to pay somebody twice a year than pay for an equipment.
I'm, that's you guys', I'm just giving you an example, sir, I'm not saying.
And I, and I, we've talked about this, we don't believe that twice a year is a good number.
Right, I'm just saying that's what they say, got to see it run, because if you went by out there, there was weeds that were taller than you on my shoulders. So, sorry, if there's other questions like that, I mean, that's where you guys all, as the board, get to decide what the right expense is, but there's a magnitude of categories that you can use it on as those needs are there.
Basically, how this would work is Kenny's budget would cover repairs, replacements, maintenance of different county items and equipment, and you, Shane, and the Baker Group would, would expense these in the expense reports to the federal government appropriately.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want to ever forget that it's me working with your finance director, Dennis Butler, has been a hand-in-hand process the whole time. So it's been Dennis and I working together, so I want to make sure that we're giving him props, too, because it is Dennis. This, this document, Dennis was working with me on Saturday and Sunday two weeks ago, having me help with that, but he was on the phone with me, so I just want everybody to know, Dennis has been working on this. And this was an extremely important thing that Dennis wanted to get done, was this to be reallocated. So we've been working through and talking through that, so this was also done in joint with Dennis.
Yes, thank you. Any questions on future expense? Again, to reiterate, these are Federal American Rescue Plan Act dollars, these are not Woodbury County Property Tax dollars that we are reallocating at this time. And the reason we're reallocating them is, was stated earlier, but basically funds were, the funds were not spent, they were not needed in the areas that we originally anticipated. So we're glad to defer $58,000 worth of Building Services expenses on the new LEC with this action, and also cover the moving expense or purchase of a cooler freezer required to serve the building, and also pay off a invoice that came out of the blue for some stuff with Iowa Judicial Branch.
I'll move this.
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by Nelson. Are there any questions or further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 4-0. Thank you. Next item, 11B, is also from myself, but this is for information. This is to receive into the record Woodbury County's July 12 motion to reconsider the final decision in order with the Iowa Utilities Commission regarding Summit Carbon Solutions LLC and their hazardous liquid pipeline permit, including rights of eminent domain. Similar to what the board did previously with our brief, I wanted to publicly highlight and provide as a resource to the public our filing in this docket number, which will be saved in the minutes on the county website. And just wanted to make sure, again, that everyone had a chance to see what Woodbury County is supporting, along with the other counties that are in this coalition of counties, represented by Mr. Timothy Whipple with Allers and Cooney, in reference to this and our objection to the Summit Carbon Solutions permit process. It's important to note publicly that the IUC, used to be the IUB, has not responded in regards to this. They simply didn't want to discuss the important legal and factual deficiencies that we argued with our attorney existed in their June 25 final decision in order, and there was a refusal to explain why they would not consider different things that we identified. And the public can see and read this document and see exactly what we argued should be reconsidered, and I think they should, because when our county supervisors get input from our public, that these things are important, I want everyone to be aware that we don't just take that home. We digest that, and we make sure it's put into a legal format, and it's put before the authorities, and that we are arguing on behalf of our landowners against eminent domain for a private project and the potential of that. Also, I'm happy to share an update with the, with the public today, and that is that along with the counties listed in this brief, which are Shelby, Cassuth, Floyd, Emmett, Dickinson, Wright, and our own county, and potentially another county or counties that seek to join, Woodbury County, along with, at this point, Shelby County and Emmett County, have taken action to approve, moving forward with seeking judicial review before the state court in regards to the docket number regarding the permit application from Summit Carbon Solutions. What that means is, we don't think the IUC acted fairly and without bias and without extra influence that did not take into account our landowners' protests, and we would like an impartial judge with the state level to make a determination and see if they should perhaps read and decide what was improper and what was applied, you know, misapplied as far as the rules, and what factual deficiencies should be addressed per our brief, simply trying to get a judgment on the validity of the evidence that the counties have submitted, and again, not just Woodbury County, but in coordination with others. This comes at minimal cost to Woodbury County because we anticipate a cost share with most, if not all, or even more of those originally in this filing of the brief, and so we're talking about a couple thousand, a few thousand dollars to continue and seek a judgment from state court and go from there. So again, this is what Woodbury County is doing. Any other board, any board comments on this?
Nope, I just, I appreciate your comment that we are hearing, we are hearing people from all across the county, in town, out of the country, affected, not affected, that they're not happy with what's happened, and we continue to show that we're doing what we can to combat this, so.
I would say something that came up as a major concern was the review given to setbacks and how that was not seemingly a concern at the IUB or IUC, whatever you want to call them, so.
We don't know what they're going to rename themselves if this, at the next step.
The IDK.
Any public comment on this? All right. Happy to provide that update. Item 12 now is reports on committee meetings. Are there any reports on committee meetings?
Yes, I have a few. We have the WCICC meeting, and just the updates are just a lot of county equipment regarding ITs being upgraded, and we're also upgrading some of our security software, which is good, and just, I think everyone knows, a few weeks ago, we had that CrowdStrike, well, it's been more a few weeks, probably almost a month ago, that CrowdStrike incident where it shut down a lot of computers around the world. And anyhow, Woodbury County, due to our department, just their foreknowledge and just willing to keep things upgraded, security programs, and just the physical hardware, we were able to have minimal outages on our county computers. There's a few affected, I think, I believe they said only, I think it was 10 or 12 individual computers were affected between the county and the city computers with that CrowdStrike issue upgrade. So it was just, I bring that up because just, once again, with John Malloy and the department, they realized that a good offense is better, is better than playing catch-up after the event, and they're going on the offensive to protect the county internet infrastructure, computers, all that, to protect us, and so I think just well done with that. Second of all, District Board of Health, just updating policies and just also building maintenance. Quite a few things came up on the building, as always, as we know with building and maintenance, and so they're just working on just fixing some air handlers and lights, stuff like that, nothing major. And then lastly, with SHIP, the Siouxland Human Investment Partnership, just Healthy Finances was a big takeaway from this month's meeting. They're doing really well with investments and just also getting grants, securing grants to help fund programs and help people in our community. And so that's all that I have.
I guess I did have one thing that's kind of important.
What's going on?
The LEC Authority met this afternoon to adopt and accept a letter of substantial completion from Goldberg Group Architects, and the keys will be handed over to the sheriff's office first thing tomorrow morning, so.
Great.
Great news.
Great news. Do you want to discuss, you know, or just give an update briefly on next steps for the sheriff's office? And, you know, I know the public's, you know, received explanation of what substantial completion means, but it's a construction term, so.
Yeah, so contractually, Housman has now 60 days to continue some work on some issues that we've talked about again today, we talked about last week. Some of these issues are on the roof, so they don't have anything to do with inside and moving that kind of stuff, you know, quite a bit of it's cleanup, so painting, caulking in the parking lot, retaining walls, that sort of thing. But, so we've got a list, GGA is working on coming up with dollar figures of what those jobs are going to cost, because Iowa code allows us to withhold 200% of the value of those things, and so we've got quite a bit of leverage over them over these next 60 days to make sure that the project or that these last few items get done. But yeah, the county sheriff, I believe that they're going to start moving things out there immediately, you know, they've got a lot of things to move, evidence, files, personal items, that sort of thing, you know, they're going to want to get the inmates out there when they can, but that's going to be a massive undertaking as well. We've got other departments that have to move, and so I anticipate that they're going to mobilize and start doing that, and so we look forward to having them out there.
And is it, is it fair to say that even though there's been the delays that there have been, that the sheriff's office has been industrious in training and hiring?
Absolutely.
And making sure that they're ready to go as soon as they get those keys?
Yep, they've had staff out there, they've been doing, they've been doing training out there all the way along. You know, there were some personal items coming into offices already several months ago, so I mean, they've, they've definitely been making their way through that building, getting familiar with it, which is great. The trainings, I think, from what I hear, have been going good, so I think that they're going to be able to hit the ground running, and, and so we won't lose too much time on
I had Simcoe Exec and Community Action Agency, which you get their minutes, and nothing really consequential to the scheme of things for our meeting.
Item 13 then, any citizen concerns? Hearing none. Item 14, any board concerns?
No board concerns, but just once, let's iterate, we, we can open up the LEC, it's a good thing, let me try to say that again. We have possession of the building, and I just, I talked with some constituents over the weekend, just to remind our citizens that we will go after every dollar of damages, and we are going to make sure we, we hold everyone accountable for the delays, so. I just think some people, there's some people that want to let things go and not pursue damages, but we are going to do that, and I think that would be irresponsible of us not to do that, so. I'm looking forward to that in the sense of holding people accountable, it's always a good thing, holding people to justice, so.
Yes, we hope that a lot of the propensity to cast blame so freely is now, is now in concert with Woodbury County's legal efforts, because it's in everyone's best interest as a taxpayer.
Correct.
Love us or hate us as individual supervisors to advocate for the county's positions in regards to this, because we are, and the LEC Authority is, the entities seeking and will be awarded these damages on behalf of our taxpayers, no one else. No one else is coming, it's us arguing with the legal resources that we have and that we budgeted, and we will pursue that because it is in response to everything we've dealt with. This is not something where the LEC is going to open and we're just going to say, well, that was a big mulligan. We're going to say this is, is open, we're going to be achieving the different revenues we've promised the taxpayers when they voted for the bond, and we'll also be making our arguments in court about what we've lost. A lot of people would like to make those arguments in public, but it's going to be the county's and the LEC Authority's turn to work in coordination and to seek those damages in the way that reflects the collective pain and suffering we've all gone through. And so I look forward to the public joining with their representatives and seeking damages for themselves, essentially, and not simply waving around and attacking the nearest target. Shifting to some good news, and some more good news, I received word from the county attorney that they've already received at least one applicant who turned down a position with the attorney's office in previous months due to the compensation package, and seeing what the board has done with the MOU and upgrading the compensation package, would like to revisit that, and so we do need, you know, we can't, it's not effective right now, we do need to wait for the attorney's union to also countersign the MOU, I believe that's later this week, but as soon as we get that, HR can update the salaries online, and we can get people like this contacted and get some movement.
That's great to hear.
Great news.
That's good news.
Look forward to that. Any other board concerns? Thank you, we are adjourned.